I'd like to call this Village Board meeting to order. This is number 3,064. It's November 25th. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Great. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. First thing on the agenda would be the approval of minutes from the board meeting from November 11th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries. At this point, anyone want to make any public commentary, address the board? Now is the time to come on up. Does anyone here want to? Just raise your hand. Okay. Oh, sir. Yeah.
I do, excuse me, because I've never been to one of the meetings. I'm not sure it's as concerning what you're currently talking about.
Sir, can you please give your name and address for the clerk?
Yes. It's Jody Arms.
Could you spell that, please, your last name?
Last name is A.R. M. is Mary, S. is in Sam.
Okay.
Address is 121 South Archer Avenue.
Thank you.
I've been in contact with the police department as well as Kathy at City Hall. I've also talked to Victor last week regarding residential zoning. We currently have some issues within the Archer Avenue. There's actually two houses running a, if you want to call it, a fixer-upper garage kind of business out of their garages. My current neighbor's running that, as well as 135 South Archer. Between the two of them, they're obviously communicating between the two of them. I don't know exactly the exchanges that are going on there, but I know it's dealing with cars. Since I've been living at 121, which is, we moved in June of last, actually, 2012, the owner of the house, rented out the house. He currently, he actually, which we've noticed, would not, we noticed, but he did put a third bedroom in that house. That house is being, it's, right now, it's listed as a two-bedroom house. He's currently paying less taxes than anyone else on the street because it's, you know, is listed as a two-bedroom house. But the biggest concern, obviously, is the person that he's renting it out to is running a fixer-upper garage out of his garage. As I mentioned, I have contacted the Mundaline Police Department several times. I've talked to Officer Clark, who is the code enforcement there, as well as Kathy at City Hall. We've gotten to the point where we're not getting any kind of progress on it, I guess. It continues to happen. You know, it's obviously out of my hands. I'm an owner, homeowner. You know, I can't control a neighbor's house, or what they do in their house, or what they do out of the garage. The other, obviously, the other issue is it's a shared driveway. So between the two of us, we're sharing the one driveway. He's had 14 cars come within the last 11 months. Whether, most of them, he's been doing something on them with the garage door closed, with the cars in there. I have it all documented. I have emails, I have pictures, I have everything. I pretty much have given Officer Clark, as well as Kathy, all the emails. Well, actually, it's the shared emails between the three of us, but the pictures as well. You know, I don't know what else can be done with this, but I felt it was appropriate to approach the Mundaline Board to make my complaint and to see if some kind of stuff can happen with this.
Just so I understand, you counted 14 cars in 11 months?
Correct.
And do these appear to be his own cars that he's fixing in his garage?
No, they're the cars. He's currently, he currently works for a dealer. I don't know what the dealer is. I'm assuming it's close because just recently, last week, he had two cars within one day. It was a short period of time between switching between the cars. They, the other thing is, his wife is currently driving a Dodge Durango with templates. Templates are expired. According to, from what Officer Clark has told me, they expired last month. You know, as citizens of Mundaline and of Illinois, I think we're all here to abide by Illinois laws, as well as, you know, far as plates and whatnot goes, as far as, you know, as well as the, you know, doing some kind of business of our garage, it's illegal.
Okay.
I do have a zoning map. Obviously, I'm sure you're aware of it. It's, you know, Mundaline, actually, Archer is residential. It's single-family housing. But as I mentioned, 135 and 121, or actually, 115 are, you know, communicating between the two of them. There are several complaints between myself, my neighbor, which is at 112. His name is Wally. It is on record, far as the police station goes. I've spoken to Officer Clark about that. He does have records of Wally calling in regarding the situation. As far as, I have my other neighbor, which, his name is Tom. He lives on the other side of the house. He has the same situation. I mean, you know, between the three of us that know that this is going on, do not approve, especially when the three of us are paying higher taxes and, you know, they're getting away with running a business out of the garage.
Okay. So we have, these folks have your number, is that right? I mean, you've given...
I spoke to Victor briefly last week because I asked him, I wanted to get his zoning map. You know, I thought Mundaline gave them to you, but obviously, you can get them online. I did get it online. Spoke to him briefly last week about it because I was in the office. Officer Clark does have my number, Kathy has my number.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. We'll have an internal, we'll figure out whose ball, whose court the ball is in between these various departments that you mentioned. And I could think we can commit that someone will call you, right? I mean, I think, say, not by Thanksgiving, maybe, but...
That's fine.
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
There's two addresses in the question.
There is. There is. 135 South Archer. And that one has, obviously, I'm not, you know, I'm bringing it up because they're obviously communicating between the two houses, but there has been cited several times a tow truck dropping off cars at 135. There's also car bumpers out in front of their garage, as well as on the side of the garage. There's probably about 11 bumpers out there, which can plainly see that someone's doing work on cars and, you know, leaving parts out by the garage. 121, or I'm sorry, 115 South Archer. Yes. And like I said, there's 14 cars there. And actually, I do have documentation, if you'd like to have it. I unfortunately didn't print everything out, but I have a USB. You're more than likely to have it to just see the pictures, the emails.
I assume that Officer Clark...
Yes, they do. Yes. Yes. But, I mean, as I said, you know, this is going unresolved. I mean, I keep hearing, I mean, my wife recently called Kathy not too long ago. She, Kathy complained about having nine cars where she lives that aren't drivable, whatever the situation. It's not about Kathy, it's about us. You know, if someone's running a business out of the garage and it's residential area, I don't think, you know, if they have a license, then fine. And if Mundaline's allowing it, then that's fine as well. But as far as I know, it is commercial, I'm not sorry, not commercial, but it's residential. And as far as I know, they don't have a license to be running any kind of business out of the two garages.
Okay. Well, this is, you know, why we have zoning. I mean, because you're expressing that it's a nuisance for all this going on right next to you.
It is.
And that's why we have zoning laws, is so that these kinds of things are delineated so that we can, you know, live, you know, peaceful existences in the places we choose to live. So, you know, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's definitely on the radar, and we'll get to the bottom of it. And we'll have someone give you a call, I would say, mid-next week, at least with a status update. I think we can commit that, right?
Right. Yeah, we'll look into it. I'll get involved with it, with Chief Gunther, and we'll get involved and we'll report back to the board.
Okay. I mean, you know, I don't really push you here, but the biggest thing is, it is a big nuisance. You know, it's interfering with our lives, with having all these cars coming in and out all the time. You know, like I said, obviously, it's getting to be winter now. The garage is closed. He's doing work on the inside of the garage. You know, I can't be out there and document these things. I can't go in there to his garage and say, well, can you open your garage so I can, you know, take pictures of you doing work on the garage, or on the cars. You know, it's out of my hands, and, you know, in some way, I would like to get this resolved, whatever it takes to get it resolved.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Anyone else? Okay. Before we get to some presentations and some awards, I just want to say just a few words about the holidays coming up. We have a once-in-a-lifetime occurrence on Thursday where we have the Jewish celebration of Hanukkah occurring on the same day, or the beginning of Hanukkah beginning on the same day as Thanksgiving. It happens, apparently, once in a lifetime where these two coincide. And so I just want to take a few moments to, a little bit of history, and then just a thought here. Hanukkah commemorates the dedication of the Second Holy Temple in Jerusalem back in 165 B.C. following a victorious Jewish revolt against the Greek occupiers. Now, the temple had been overrun and desecrated for many years. When it was dedicated, there was only enough lamp oil for one day, but through a miracle, instead, the oil lasted eight days, which is now, which is how long it took to prepare and press the oil for new oil, olive oil for the lamps. So that's why Hanukkah lasts eight days with an additional candle on the menorah being lit each night. Okay? Now, Thanksgiving, though not as old, or with the accompanying miracle at its inception, still has quite a bit of history. In the very early 1600s, a group of English religious dissenters traveled from England to Holland and then over to the New World in search of a place to live that was free from religious persecution. Having landed in Plymouth Rock, Massachusetts in November of 1620, they had just a few weeks to set up a colony before winter set in and half their population perished. The remaining settlers, with the help of local Native Americans, planted their first crop in the spring and harvested it in the fall. Afterwards, they had a large three-day feast that included 53 pilgrims and 90 Native Americans. Two years later, they did the same thing, and thus began an annual American tradition of a Thanksgiving feast. Now, two holidays coming in on the same date. Let me ask you a question. What theme fuses both of these stories together? And that is religious liberty. For the Jews, they fought to get their religious liberty, and the pilgrims fled to get theirs. And part of our national DNA is the idea that people can worship God as they so choose, and most importantly, people cannot be compelled to do things that violate their religious conscience. Culturally, I don't know if you've seen that movie, highly recommend a Gary Cooper movie called Friendly Persuasion. It's a Civil War film. It's great. And it really brings this out well. But these ideas and the limits of these are nowadays being severely tested in the courts, as they have over many years. And we have another round coming up next year, and we'll hear more about this. But this Thursday, with these two holidays coming in together, I think it'd be a good time to reflect on our collective heritage in the area of religious liberty and liberty of conscience. And so, to all of our Jewish residents in Mundaline, a very happy Hanukkah, and to all of our residents in Mundaline, a very happy Thanksgiving to all of us. So with that, we'll go on to our next part here. We have an important presentation here. I have a nice, this is the, item six, under Presentation and Awards. I want, this is going to be a distinguished service award. This goes to someone that has, you know, he's been everywhere. And he serves on the Plan Commission for us, and this is for 13 years of dedicated service. Bill Rikus, you're back there. Can you come on up and just go around? And we want to just thank you so much for serving 13 years on the Mundaline Community Days Commission. We all get excited about Community Days. It's been such a great hit all these years, and we thank you so much. Of course, my daughters have been in the pageants, and you've been there. And it's been quite a tradition. They all know you. And, but thank you so much. And if you want to say a few words, that'd be great, but we can give you this and congratulate you.
Well, I do acknowledge Steve Trotter was the first queen the first year, so that was 13 years ago. A long time ago. And I want to thank you for this recognition. But I have to say that working on the Mundaline Community Days Commission with the other commissioners and my friend Mike Quinn over there, who moderates those meetings, and working with the tireless volunteers on the pageants, those pageants have become known as the best in Lake County. And of course, the Mundaline Community Days, as was just evidenced by the survey that was taken by the branding company, in that survey, when the people were asked, both residents and non-residents, what are the best things about living in Mundaline? Right at the top of the list, near the top of the list, within the first top 10, were Mundaline Community Days. So I have to say, it was a labor of love, working in Mundaline Community Days. And I thank you very much for this reputation. And I'll just continue to do what I can for the citizens and village of Mundaline in any way that I can. So thank you very much.
Can I introduce your family that's here with you?
I sure would love to. Over there, I think everybody knows my wife, Alberta. My daughter, Janine. My other daughter, Regina. My future son-to-be, Anna golfer. Remember him? Dave, and of course, my two, two of me, my eight lovely grandchildren. That's Kenny and Leanna. And six more running around someplace. Thank you again. Thank you.
You said they were visiting the whole night, right?
I don't know if you'd want that.
Okay. Before we move on to my report, I'm going to turn it over to our village administrator, John Libado. He's going to just show us a real exciting little piece of technology we have now.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to stand over here because we're not in our new building till yet, and I have to tether to the laptop. So hopefully, in our new building, I won't do that. One of the things that, I just wanted to spend five minutes, go over a new app that developed for the Village of Mundaline. And, or in front of your chairs, I put Community Guide from the GLB Chamber. And then there, I think 16 is an ad that we ran on the app that we were developing. And as luck would have it, or I'd say, good planning, we developed the app, developed that kind of brochure came out. So that was a good time and an art time. And so, one of the unique things about this app is that it's, looks and feels like an app, but it's really not an app. It's a web-based. And so, you can go to the Playstation if you have an Android, not Playstation.
I was like, really?
You can go to Apple. You can go and get the app. And the same with the iPhone. We have, developed one for the iPhone as well. So if you have an Android or an iPhone, you can get those available. And so I just wanted to run through this real quick. Now, this is, what are the...
Your policy? Probably. Did you not go to the store, John?
Yeah. But this is one that we just simply downloaded on our phone. I haven't installed on mine just last week. But we think it's, what's kind of unique about it is not only is it a web-based, not a true app, like when you go to our, update our website, it will also update the app automatically. And that's a little bit different than how other apps work. All the apps that you see out there that are available. The other part of this is, this is an app that we developed in-house. When we've looked at other communities that have developed apps, we think that this one not only looks better, it functions better, but it was developed in-house. Other communities spent more than $10,000 developing their app, and we're able to do it in-house. And so this is what you get when you open up the app. You have some rolling pictures that are on the screen itself. But my favorite is this...
Oh, God.
Access to your elected officials. So you can easily, if you have it on your phone, you're just one click away from getting a phone call or an email. So you can kind of...
Thanks, Dad.
Yeah. Love that.
Scroll along here, and if you wanted to call one of the trustees, you simply have to push the picture, and the phone number will come up for you to make a phone call. So that's kind of a neat feature, they have that access. Also, if there's any service requests, you're out of the weekend. This started off that it was a service request for public works, and we brought it out to a service request for the entire village. You simply fill in the appropriate information and leave us the message, and that gets sent to the church hall, and then we can deal with the service request at that time.
Is that e-pay? Is that paying your water bill?
Yes. There's e-pay on here, so you can click on that.
That's awesome.
And pay your water bill from your mobile. We believe that everything is ultimately going to the mobile phones. And so as we're developing a new website, that's something that we're also looking at, that it will be mobile-ready. So when you open up our website on your phone, it will automatically decide to the screen. Here's our restaurant guide. This is really kind of a cool feature. If you've looked at other apps from other communities, we think this is pretty innovative. If Chinese is what's on your menu tonight, then you can take a look at all of the Chinese options that we have in town. If there is one that you're not sure what their menu is, then you can simply click on their, and get to their menu.
Playstore.
And you can decide if you want to eat. And also, if you're simply calling to make reservations, then you can just hit the phone number. You can hit the phone number right there. So it's really kind of a, maybe a pretty cool feature that we have here.
For those of us not so technology savvy, how do we get that on our phone?
You go to the Playstore.
Yes, the Playstore. Playstore?
And you simply, you can search by typing in Mundaline, and the app should come up.
You'll see the icon, the logo.
Yeah, you'll see the logo.
Come down over here, as we see...
Okay. So I'm...
Yeah, we were going to go through this. We heard there might be some technology challenge.
Yeah, that's me. Okay. What's the Playstore called?
Playstore. They talk literally inventively. Playstore.
I do not have Playstore.
Are you on an iPhone?
All share play?
Are you on iPhone?
Keep going.
No, she's got an Android.
Okay. I've got an Android.
Here's the library's website. You can see that they're mobile-ready. Everything on their website ties into the mobile phone. You can simply scroll up and down. There's a little bit of a delay showing me this, but you get the idea. Our hours are there. If you want to contact Sam, you can, there's an icon for it. There's also one app. And all of the phone numbers are listed on the app itself. So anyway, that was it. I just wanted to kind of unveil this that's out there for the general public.
Just wondering, will there eventually be these schools on there, so you could see the different schools' calendars?
Yes. You know, it's, we're kind of playing about it, but you can get to our website. Our website currently is not mobile-ready. I mean, you can get there and maneuver around it. We know that recreation is a big part of the community, so we've got a park leadership website there that easily provides access, which is important. There's also, the library is there, obviously. So that's it. And then we have a little bit of history about the community that somebody who has our app can simply read a little bit about us. This is all information that's available on our website that's simply on our app now. The cool part is it will allow us to update, when we update our website, we don't have to go in and also update our account. Simply by updating our website, all the stuff that we publish.
I got it.
These are the main websites.
So excited. So, this is really nice.
So, if someone has a community event that they want to have, like I'm on December 7th, and I know that the same community is having a craft, Mayor, how would they go about having a...
They could contact administration, and we have put a lot of that stuff on our calendar, so...
We put anything on. Whenever anybody sends it in, it goes on the calendar.
Okay.
So just email at info@mundaline.org, or...
Okay.
Any, either, anyone in town or myself.
Very cool.
It is.
Just, I don't know that we had the mics on for much of that, but we just showed the, for the folks watching, we just showed the new mobile app that our village came out with. And you can go to, for Android right now, it'll be for iPhone later.
It's coming in a week.
About a week, it'll be for iPhone. But you can go to the Playstore, look up Mundaline, and download the mobile app, and you'll get all the features that you just saw up there. Now, the calendar is something, just, we didn't have the mics going, but just to make sure, we would, if you want to get something put, a community event, in the calendar, you could just email us at info@mundaline.org with your event, and we'll do our best to get it in the calendar that appears on the mobile app.
Do you want to also, and there's also a restaurant guide, an e-pay, staff directory, Fremont Library link, contact elected officials. A calendar. It's fabulous.
Okay. And just, goodos to Carmen Pedraza and Dawn Jenich for doing such a great job putting all that together. I know it's a team effort and everything, and there's folks behind you helping you and everything. And Dawn, you did a great job.
Yeah, I would just like to echo that, too. I know Carmen and Dawn spent a lot of time working on this. Carmen running the technical side of things, making sure it worked the way we want it to work. And obviously, Dawn helped us, give us the look that we were wanting. So, thank you, both of you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Going to my report, we have the mayoral commission assignments. This is Exhibit 2. And there are two folks we want to, and we're going to take a separate vote on these separately, okay? So the first would be to the Mundaline Community Days Commission. This is for Gary Gunther. And so I need a motion to approve Gary Gunther for the Community Days Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries. I'm very excited for Gary to serve on this. He's right back there, and I guess we can have him come on up and get sworn in, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Come on up.
I, Gary Gunther, do solemnly swear...
I, Gary Gunther, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of...
Of the office of Mundeline Community Days Commissioner-
Of the office of Mundeline Community Days Commissioner-
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my-
Patient, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Gary, for, uh, volunteering to do that, that's awesome, thank you. Um, next we have, um, I'd need a motion to approve the, uh, reappointment of Stephanie McDermott to the Economic Development Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Voss, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Great, motion carries, thank you. Uh, next we have some mayoral proclamations. Uh, there's two of them. Exhibit three is noting that December 2013 is the National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month. And, um, I could just go through the whereas's and read it off and, uh, have it be stale, but, uh, let me just speak just a few seconds from the heart, you know? This is, uh, um, I mean, every, every, you know, every December holiday season, you hear about some horrific accident, often with young people, often it's alcohol-related. And, uh, uh, we just note December because of the holiday season when there's just more of a propensity for this. So I think, you know, moving forward, those of us that are in the community, the civil leaders, you know, uh, you know, staff, when you're out there, I mean, just be aware that this is an issue. And we talk about it every year, blah, 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 but you know, um, you know, and I'm just reminded more and more of this issue with heroin invading, uh, Lake County and DuPage. It's big, big, been big in the news and this is called drunk and drugged driving. But, um, it's just something that you can never really not, you know, to, to just talk less about because it's getting worse and worse. And so it's just note December and just be aware of that, okay? All right. Next we have, uh, noting January as Lake County Crime Stoppers Month. And this is a great program that we have in our town. And I know when I was, uh, years and years ago, working with Little League, I worked with Andy Anderson over there and, um, it really helped the situation that we had. And I just wanna turn it over to Chief to talk a little bit about Crime Stoppers and January being the month for Crime Stoppers Month. But if you could just tell us a little bit about what Crime Stoppers does.
Crime Stoppers is actually a national organization, um, and it's a not-for-profit. And they're organized and developed to, uh, take anonymous information tips from businesses, citizens, about, uh, crime, drug trends, things that are happening in various communities across the country. Uh, they are able to keep the individuals anonymous and then offer some monetary, uh, reward for that information, should it, uh, should it lead to, uh, an arrest or to the stopping of that activity. Uh, in, interestingly enough, it's broke down by counties also throughout the, um, United States. And Lake County's Crime Stoppers office is located in the Mundeline Police Department. Uh, so Andy Anderson, who's a representative from Lake County, he works at our police department. Um, and obviously he's a se- separate entity, but we gave him the office space because it's a, it's an important initiative. Uh, you know, and, and they help us out quite a bit with, uh, um, big incidents that take place, getting information out, advertising, looking for, uh, those tips and things that can lead us to, uh, to fix those. So, very beneficial for us.
So just to be clear, if someone has a tip about a crime, but they don't want to go to the police for fear of something bad happening with, with them being the person that told, they would go to Crime Stoppers who then is like an agency for this, is, is that a way to put it?
That's correct. They can leave their information, they don't have to leave their name, they're assigned a number, if you will. They're associated via that number then, uh, as anything, uh, progresses from that point. So they don't ever have to give their identity, they don't have to tell where they're from, they just give their information. That's all that, uh, Crime Stoppers is looking for. And then Andy will, uh, decipher through that information, make sure the appropriate, uh, agency gets that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's very hard work that Andy puts forth, so I appreciate that.
Yep, so if you're watching and you have a crime that you have knowledge about or you know someone that might have knowledge and they don't wanna come forward for fear of something, this is a great little way to get that information out and for that person to get it off their chest, you know, and, and to give us some great information. So January is Crime Stoppers Month. Okay, that wraps it up for my report. Let's go to the trustee reports, Public Works Committee, Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three motions tonight. The first motion is to pass an ordinance modifying the Village of Mundeline Landscape Code. And you can find that in your packet in Public Works Exhibit PW dash one.
Hey, we have a motion by Meyer.
Second.
Second by Abernathy, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second motion I have tonight is to authorize the mayor's signature on letter of commitment and intergovernmental agreement with the Lake County Municipal League. And you'll find that as Exhibit PW dash two.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Abernathy, any discussion?
I had a quick question.
Trustee Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was just wondering how out of all the different, um, options, we chose to do just the crack ceiling and the pavement marking?
We have in-house labor that performs the majority of those other services.
Okay, and so then we chose these two based on the cost savings that it would provide to us?
Yes.
I was wondering the numbers, but that's okay, I, uh, he, you are the Public Works Department, so.
Numbers in terms of-
As in like, what, what is the cost savings? How much would it cost for us to spray the, um, the pavement marking and the crack ceiling versus having it done through the, uh, Municipal League?
We can't. We don't have the equipment to perform thermoplastic pavement striping.
Okay, that's how we came to this, thank you very much.
Okay, any more? Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And the third motion I'd like to make tonight is a motion to approve a professional services agreement with the Prairie Forge Group for the public workspace need analysis study in the not-to-exceed amount of $16,800 and authorize the Director of Public Works and Engineering to sign the agreement. And you'll find that as Exhibit Public Works dash three.
Second the motion.
Motion by Meyer, second by Simple, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Anything, anything else that we need to bring up?
No.
All right, thank you very much, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Trustee Meyer. Next, Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this evening, um, in Exhibit Number One for Finance Committee, uh, we're considering, uh, refunding, um, certain bond issue. And, uh, we have tonight, uh, Mr. Phil McKenna from Kane McKenna Capital Incorporated. And I'd like to ask him to come up in order to, uh, explain the basis for what we are doing or suggesting that we do in regard to this refinancing and answer any questions that trustees might have. Mr. McKenna?
Thank you. I'm Phil McKenna, President of Kane McKenna Associates. Um, the basic concept, the basic principle of what you're looking to do tonight is to pass an ordinance that enables the, uh, village president and the clerk to go forward with a sale that lowers the interest rate on certain outstanding debt. Really just like refinancing a mortgage, taking advantage of what are now higher, I'm sorry, are now lower interest rates, so that those bonds that were out there in 2005 at then, uh, then market interest rates can drop, can drop with the market. It gets a lot more complicated and I don't wanna, I'll go into that if anybody wants me to. But where it gets complicated is the federal government comes involved. And the federal government says, okay, if you're gonna do that, then we're gonna restrict what you take those new bond proceeds and invest them in. So you've got, you gotta play this game, sort of, you know, two marbles here, play this game of how low can you get your new bonds in the market versus what will the federal government let you invest the proceeds in? And what's the differential? Okay, well, right now, it's about 200 basis points, or 2%. And what that winds up producing is the savings of about $233,000. Um, I think as we've been looking at this, you know, over the last six, 12 months, whatever, the, the range of savings has been anywhere from $150,000 to about $300,000. What happens when you, when you do the refunding is that, uh, the old bonds literally go away. The trustee or escrow agent from the new bonds takes a sum and goes and invests them in what the treasury says you can invest them in. And it's mathematically computed that it exactly equals the total principal plus interest that you have outstanding now. So the 2005 bonds literally don't exist anymore. The 2013 bonds do exist, but then what you look at is that when you add up the total principal and the total interest, is it less than what you had before? And yes, it is less than what you had before. Um, then you look at how much less, and that's what we're projecting right now, about $233,000 less on it. Um, you still have to go through a number of the, uh, procedures that you do with any bond issue. Uh, you have to go through Moody's Investor Service. And Moody's has been really, really tough on communities, particularly Illinois communities, over the past year. Um, I see you smiling, everybody can guess why Illinois? Well, 'cause Illinois pays six months late and things like that. Uh, so they've really been, they've been taking us to task. Uh, but John and Doug did a great job, uh, showing in Moody's the amounts of reserves, the contingencies that are there. I mean, the fact that you're financing the village hall without any debt whatsoever is, is a big thing. Almost nobody does that, I mean, you, you know that as well as I do. Um, the, uh, the development that is now starting to curve back again was significant. And their bottom line was that they confirmed a double A1 rating, which was your rating before. It is the second highest rating for Moody's. Um, and they don't, they're not given upgrades to anybody right now. So, you know, I, I'd be very, very proud of that, of that, uh, achievement of second highest rating. The other thing that I wanna point out is that, uh, the Village of Mundeline, to the best of my knowledge, is always sold bonds by competitive sale. Uh, what we're talking about here is still a competitive sale. However, the way the market moves up and down, it can move up and down, you know, 30, $40,000 in savings, what we're suggesting is that give a little bit of flexibility to, um, to your elected officials. And we have a date set next week, December 4th. And we believe that date will be a good date to achieve, you know, 200,000 plus in savings. But if it's not, and we, and we get bids in from underwriters and they're not there, then we can say, "Thank you, but no thank you." And we'll go out a week later, or we'll go out a month later. You will have that flexibility and there, you know, so that you will be able to achieve the goals that you've set with respect to the savings. Um, that's the one difference from what you've done in the past with respect to the sales. The, uh, the bonds are secured by the general obligation of the village, which was the same thing in 2005. Trying to remember, 2005 was a multiplicity of capital improvements, as I recall it. Um, and, uh, so this obviously doesn't change the utilization of any of the proceeds of the bonds. Um, and, uh, uh, I don't know, I should sit back and see if the questions are ready.
Question?
Yeah.
So you've talked about, there's, we expect, uh, savings in excess of $200,000, but can you tell us what the cost is for us to do this?
Sure.
Is that figured into the savings or that's additional?
It is figured in the savings.
Okay.
The cost is about $60,000.
Okay.
Um, so if, if nobody charged you, then you would have about $293,000 of savings.
But we wouldn't have it done either, so.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question also.
Oh, go ahead, yeah, Trustee Meyer?
Yeah, on that $233,000 savings, is that the life of the bond? Are we, what time period are we talking about?
Good point. It's, it, it, the, uh, the other thing I should point out is that we're also, uh, shortening the life of the bonds by two years. Um, so yes, it would be even savings over the life of the bonds. Um, the number, somewhere around $130,000 a year.
Okay.
Um, and the savings that, that we're talking about, it's, it's not future, it's not measured in future savings. It's net present value savings. It's that, that the stream of savings taken to today at today's interest rate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Trustee Kim?
Um, I'm one of the newer people to this, so at the risk of looking very foolish, I have two questions. Um, you said it's like a refinance of a home loan, so basically then the years start over minus two years, so how mu- how many years is that to pay off?
Um, we've got nine, nine, right?
It was 20-year bond originally, so from 2005 to 2025, we're shortening it to 2020.
Okay. So we're paying it off sooner and we're saving money. Um, now, if it is also similar to a home loan, technically could we also take money from savings and just pay it off all at once? Or it, it doesn't work like that?
Sorry, what, I, the-
Prepay it all at once?
Could you pay it off all at once?
Yeah.
You are paying off all the 2005 bobs.
Uh, not refund them, but take cash on hand and pay off the 2000.
Oh, take cash on hand and, and do it? Um, you, yeah-
I'm just wondering, I mean, I was just-
You, you, yeah, sure, you could do that.
Okay.
Right, but the call date is, is coming up next year.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you could do it. There'd be a little bit of cost in terms of that, when I mentioned that the federal government's, you know, requirement that you, uh, invest in their securities.
Okay, I, I, you know, I'm really new to it, so when you compared it to a home loan, then I just-
No, that's right.
-had to ask, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Nope, I'm fine. That, um, everybody's, uh, all the questions asked? That's good. Then, Mr. McKenna, Mr. McKenna, you are, uh, excused, I guess.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Unless the mayor has any other concerns and comments, all right. Then, uh, we have a motion to consider in regard to this, uh, refinancing. It's an or, it's a motion to pass an ordinance providing for the issuance of not-to-exceed $3,800,000 general obligation refunding bond, Series 2013 of the Village of Mundeline, Lake County, Illinois, authorizing the execution of a bond order in connection therewith and providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of principal, interest on- interest on said bonds, and further providing for the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with such issuance. I will make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Then a second motion is a motion to adopt a resolution approving a bond record-keeping policy for the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Meyer. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are, the motion says approving a bond record-keeping policy, but we don't have a policy in front of us. Is this an individual that we're appointing as the keeper of the record on bonds? How does this work? I mean, we don't have a policy to look at.
The answer to that is yes, and I am that person.
Yeah.
Only because my finance director told me I had to be. So you're right, we, we do not have, and I would assume, and I, I'm looking at Mr. McKenna, I would assume this is just a requirement that we have this in place.
Correct. It's, it's very new.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't remember ever doing this in the past. So this must be, is this a federal requirement that we do this?
So the policy is whatever the administrator says goes because he's bonded?
Or you may, you may say over the next six months, you're gonna develop the policy.
Oh, all right. Okay, so our motion is to adopt a resolution, not the resolution. And so we sometime have to adopt a resolution the next six months.
I think, I, I, no, being by an council, I think taking the by a council, the motion adopted now, and then supplement.
Okay.
Well, so we, are we authorizing staff to develop a resolution? Because we don't have the record-keeping, we don't have it here to approve.
Correct.
Start on page, it's in the packet, it's toward the end of the first resolution, first motion.
Okay, it's in Finance Number One somewhere?
Yeah.
It's not the escrow agent. Page number what?
134, PDF.
Exhibit B.
Okay, for those of us not having, I mean.
Our, the first motion, the last part of that last four pages.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay, so give me not a page number, because I'm looking at a different document, a number on a document.
Resolu, oh, here, all the way to the end, Terry, it says, "Resolution for adopting, a resolution approving a bond record-keeping policy." It's about six pages from the back.
Electronically, it's page 134 of the vast PDF document of your packet. Now, they have the printed one, and it's definitely there.
I don't have that many pages, so.
Page numbers are at top, if you look at the top, it's numbers out of 338.
Thank you.
And, Mr. McKenna, this is a model resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
All right, very good. Okay? Yep.
Okay, clerk, ready? Please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
I'm still reading. Sorry.
Yes. Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. There is a second motion, and that motion is to approve the payment of bills as indicated on our dispersals pending report for AT&amp;T, and these invoices total $1,809.94, and I make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Epstein.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Epstein.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, on our omnibus list of motions tonight, we have one to pay our bills from the governing body report. These bills total $2,425,462.76. All we have this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Sullivan, next. We have Public Safety Committee. Trustee Semple.
No motions this evening, Mr. Mayor. However, I'd like to turn the floor over to Fire DC Letting regarding anything you want to say from Fire.
Thank you, trustee. Just to bring a couple things to everybody's attention, we just want to remind everybody that if you're deep frying your turkey, make sure to do it safely. We have a tragedy, multiple tragedies every year. There are several links on our website, how to do it safe, what to look for, and how to prepare yourself in case of an emergency. We also want to advise the board that we will be, we have contacted the local drinking establishments and restaurants. Start about five years ago, we started having overcrowding problems with class reunions coming into town. Several ended up in altercations. So we have advised the bar owners and the local establishments, we will be out doing with our police. Just walk through a bar, check on overcrowding issues and possible issues they're brewing in those restaurants. And finally, just from the fire department, we wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We wish you all the best.
Terrific, thank you. For police, Chief Gunther?
Just a few things. Tomorrow, we have our annual turkey giveaway. 70 families will benefit from that in combination with Ellie's. And Shop of the Cop will be December 14th at Target. This year, we will have approximately 60 children that will benefit from that. Our donations for that program were higher than they've ever been, so that will be a good, good day. And then we also have our spaghetti dinner, dinner, December 6th at 5:30 at the police department, and I usually run in combination with tree lighting. That's it, thank you.
Thanks a lot, trustee. Semple, next. Community and Economic Development Committee, trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have a fence height variance. This is a motion to pass an ordinance granting a variation to section 20.52.040 (F) (3) (A) (I) of the Mundaline Municipal Code to allow a fence height not to exceed 11 feet at 16 French court. Just as a reminder, this is just from our last meeting, that we suggested that we would pass this. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a motion to pass an ordinance repealing the existing Title 19 of the Municipal Code of Mundaline regarding subdivisions and adopting a new Title 19 establishing a subdivision ordinance as seen as exhibit CEDC 2 in your packet. And I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion?
No, it was.
Oh, second by Abernathy. Okay, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is, Chief Gunther already said, but just a reminder that our community tree lighting is December 6th at 6:00 PM at Kraklauer Park. And then I have a list of new businesses. I also want to say that Saturday, we attended a ribbon cutting, Mayor and trustee Kim and I, for Legends Car Wash at Diamond Lake and 45. Additionally, Tavern on 60 has now opened at 330 Town Line Road. Love Yourself Nutra Club at 837 South Lake Street. It's a business to distribute Herbalife nutrition products. Jiu-Jitsu 101 at 722 South Butterfield Road. Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu is a martial art combat sport and a self-defense system that focuses on grappling and especially ground fighting. We already talked about Legends Car Wash and Detailing, which is at 611 South Lake Street. We have TRT Solutions LLC at 1061 East High Street, which is Training for Law Enforcement Military and the Private Section on Classroom and Hands-on Defensive Tactics Training. And also, we have a new groomer in town, Rocky Blue Grooming, at 453 North Lake Street, which does dog grooming. Also, Saturday night, trustee Kim and I attended the first-ever Mundaline Food Swap, which was really good. I ended up getting some chestnuts and two different kinds of jams and honeys and some bread that I swapped from things that I had, homegrown carrots, homemade dog treats, homemade cookies. I thought for a first event, it went really, really well. And that is all tonight.
It's great to see so many businesses opening, right?
Well, it is. A lot of them are, well, a lot of these are businesses, but also from the food swap, a lot of them are from cottage industry businesses that are trying to get their name out. So we've had a lot of discussion about helping out incubator businesses, and this is just one of those steps.
Good stuff. Excellent. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Next, Communication and Marketing. Trustee Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Originally, there was going to be no report, but I wrote up a little ditty for us tonight. Before I do it, though, Chief Gunther, could I have you touch a little bit on the awesomely successful Latino Citizens Academy that just ended?
I would be happy. The mayor was there at the graduation, our first ever Latino Citizen Academy. I think if I said the room was packed, I might have been underestimating. We had 27 graduates, but they all showed up with their family, very happy they brought a feast, and it was, it was really a very successful event. I think everybody was happy. In fact, most of them asked if we would consider running another one in the spring because they believe that there will be a word amount, and there'll be plenty of attendance. So it was well-attended for the first, for the first round of the report, and we'll have a future.
Yeah, it was a great success for the first one we've ever had. I also heard that Lake Zurich threw one as well, but it was nowhere near as awesome as the one we had, of course. Let's see here. Okay, so I wrote up a little thing for the holiday by local campaign. Okay, so on the internet, it says, "If every household in Illinois dedicated just $10 of their weekly grocery budget towards Illinois products, 47 million would be reinvested in the Illinois economy," and that's over 2.4 billion annually. So that was from By Illinois Challenge. That's challenging you to buy your, all your Christmas products in Illinois, and that's sponsored by the Illinois Department of Agriculture. So I just took that little piece and thought, well, if every household in Mundaline spent $100 for their holiday gifts, and you bought all your necessities within our zip code, well, some of you might actually spend more than $100 for your holiday gifts. Well, that's conservatively about 10,000 households, and at 10,000 households with $100 each, that could be an injection of $1 million in the local Mundaline economy. So this campaign will just be a reminder that you can buy clothes, toys, gourmet foods, flowers, and gift certificates to find dining and services within our own town. So business owners can use those monies to send their kids to park district programs or donate it back again to the local causes and sports teams. So your purchases are an investment in our zip code. So we're actually going to start a by-local campaign. We're going to work with Don Genich and the rest of the administration to encourage people to buy their holiday gifts within the town. And along those lines, November 30th is Small Business Saturday, put on by American Express. So if you have an American Express card, you can register by going to shopsmall.com, and then $10 of your purchase at a local participating small business, such as Ron's Hobby Shop, he did not pay me to say that, I just know that he accepted it because that's where I went last year, will be refunded back to your card. So for example, you could get $10 in balsa wood flyers for stocking stuffers, and then in essence, it would be free. So that's a campaign we're going to be working on, not the American Express one, but just to shop locally. And I would encourage all of our residents to do so because you might not think it's that much, but add it all together, it's, it's huge for supporting the local economy in general. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Here, here. Good stuff, absolutely. Next, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, trustee Abernathy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion to pass an ordinance of the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois, authorizing an amended Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency Agreement, authorizing a first comprehensive amendment and restatement to the water purchase and sale contract between Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency and charter members, and further consenting to the admission of additional members and service areas pursuant to an admissions agreement to the Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency, and authorizing all necessary acts in the approval, execution, and delivery of such documents.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Sullivan. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, trustee Sullivan.
I apologize, but we go to page 5, and what I'm, what I'm looking at is the fees that are outlined, be collected from the new members, the proposed members, the North Group, which is part of Lake County, the towns of Lake Villa, Lindenhurst, in addition to Lake County unincorporated areas. Also, the West Group, possibly the Village of Volo and Wakanda together, or Volo and Wakanda separately. 2.3, it outlines the payment of 100% of the cost of the facilities to provide Lake Michigan water, and that, those facilities would be from our existing mains, most westerly ones or northerly ones, to the municipalities who are joining. It also provides for 100% of the connection fees. It also provides for recapture costs of the extension facilities based on a formula contained in 4.6. These recapture fees would be paid to the agency? And I, I don't see that they're outlined. There are dollars in regard to connection fees.
Right.
They also speak, you know, my concern is that the Village of Mundaline, along with other charter members of the agency, the water agency, have been paying down all of the capital costs, and evidently, much of that bonded indebtedness, capital costs will be paid down in 2019, etc. And yet, the new members are joining.
Right.
You said at one time Wakanda and Volo would pay some $15 million in capital contribution.
Well, now Wakanda and Volo are off the table right now.
They are. They're mentioned here, though, if in the future they want to come.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're off the table, but I don't care who the new members are. The concern I have is, are the charter members going to be paid anything in recapture costs for the amounts they've paid in the past, and which will be paid down in six years?
Now, the, the attorney for Jawa at the meeting I was at explained that the connection fees, in a way, are a recapture to the original members.
Okay. And do you have, understand, and I apologize, but I don't expect anybody's going to tell me for sure, but this, sooner or later. me for sure, but this, sooner or later, I'd like to find out, those payments of connection fees will be used in what way? Do you have any idea?
I think that just goes to the Jawa.
To accelerate the repayment of the funds?
Well, there's going to be some expansion plans, you know, down the road, that they want that money to help out with.
I think maybe Adam may have a little bit more insight into this. I have my own thoughts that they might not be fully.
Yeah, I think the connection fees are, as the mayor was stating, those are a mechanism to be able to effect recapture without having to implement a recapture. Those fees would be then utilized to improve the existing system for those charter members, not necessarily for expansion, because the expansion would be at the cost of the new members that would be coming on board.
But, when you say expand the system for the new members, they're already going to pay costs, the capital costs of bringing the service to their municipality, to their system.
Yeah, expansion is the wrong thing because.
I think it's future capital improvement.
Down the road, right now, there's enough capacity to handle these extra communities.
I think these are capital improvements that need to be made, that are going to have to be bore by the existing members, and I think they're going to use these fees that they collect from the new members to pay for those capital improvements that are going to be, that are on the horizon. I think that's, at least, that's what's been explained to me.
Would in effect go into the agency's reserves?
I don't know their accounting. We can find that out, but I would think, similar to the way we run our enterprise fund, that those fees are separated. We collect impact fees for every user that connects to our water and sewer system, and those fees are segregated and kept for a single purpose, which is capital improvements. So I would think they operate under similar guise, but we can find that out for sure. I would be surprised if those fees were used for operation expenses, because those, as you know, are not reliable. They come and go. I don't believe that the fees that would be collected from future users of these members, other communities that are looking to join Jawa, I don't believe that those fees collected will be used to retire the existing debt any sooner. I think that debt obligation is on a schedule to be paid off in 2019, and I think that will continue.
And finally, we talk, seen about an EPA loan, the amount of, to the North Group, the amount of $46 million, to be secured, not the word here, but with a special service area bond. So in effect, they're not going to increase their rate, their tax rate? Separate that out into a special service area? Tax rate?
That's, are we talking? Up north?
Up north, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I know that the county, in conjunction with, I know Lindenhurst has kind of taken the lead up there in terms of notices. I just know, I don't know why this fact sticks in my mind, but they spent something like $35,000 in a mailing to everybody in this service area. It's one of the largest service areas that's been created in Lake County, and so there is a separate, going to be a separate taxing district, if you will, to pay for those capital improvements.
Do they estimate the tax rate?
I don't, not, I lose all detail after $35,000 in mailings. We can get that.
Forty-six million in principal.
Yeah.
Over 20 years at.
It's a chunk of change.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
It's a very large district. I can get that, it's readily available.
No, that's all right.
Yeah, I'll get it. Now, I'm interested.
Okay, thank you for bearing with, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on our streets projects that have been going on. Lacklomond, other than restoration of the ground, the project is completed. Cambridge Country, other than restoration, the project has been completed. And Cambridge West, other than restoration, the project has been completed. Archer Avenue is still closed, correct?
Yes.
Yes, with the, they were supposed to, are they going to be able to do that tomorrow?
That road, it's, it is not that.
Is it, they were going to pull wires today?
It should be open tomorrow.
Okay, and because they have put down, I didn't know if they could do that today. So, we are almost done for the season, right? Anything else? Subuchay? Thank you. I'm all, that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Other reports? Trusty Voss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, there's a couple of things. First of all, I think that we're all aware of it, in case everybody isn't. Norbert, who is the owner of the gym spot here in Mundaline on Tower Road, Norbert Van Dixon, he also, he and his wife, for years, have split their residence between here in Mundaline and in Washington, Illinois. And he was in Washington, Illinois, when the tornado hit, and has sustained quite a bit of loss. He lost his car, all of his possessions, his home, where his in-laws handicapped also lived. And so there is a collection being taken up for those interested in donating cash or gift cards or whatever, to help him to replace, repair, whatever. I've seen pictures, and what's left of his home is the chimney. So, Norbert's been a fixture in Mundaline for a long time with the gym spot. He's helped a lot of kids get a start, and this could be a way for the community to pay him back, just in case anyone's interested. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm sure I'm not alone in this, I've gotten a lot of complaints about our leaf program this year. So, it seems that what we're hearing is that there are fewer trucks that are making fewer passes in the neighborhoods, and that people are concerned that the leaves are sitting in their parkway so long that they will be ruining their parkway grass. So, I was wondering if we could get an update on our leaf program.
Yeah, we can turn it over to Mr. Flynn. I know I've talked to, you want to take it? I mean, I.
Sure.
I'll let him fill in the details, but I've been watching this, you know, from experience here, and I know, just from my own experience this year, it was just different with the way the leaves fell. First of all, they fell all much later this year, and so what that means is, is people didn't get out to do their leaves until later, and so we saved them all till the end. Now, when you do that, then the leaves compact with the weather we've had, and so the leaves that are out there, they're very, very dense, and the trucks, I know that there's fewer, but Michael has some more detail, but when they come by and do the leaves, it's taking a long time at each location to get all the leaves going there, and so it's been a bit of challenge. I know I got my leaves out late, I talked to someone that, you know, we just got them out just very recently, and so, it's a different year. But with that, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Flynn to fill in the details.
Yeah, the years are always different, the way the leaves fall and when they fall. Last year, if you remember, it went very smooth. Probably three years ago, it didn't go so smooth. This year, it's, it went very smooth for the first few weeks. That's because the leaves were not falling very quickly. The last couple of weeks, though, it's gone very, very slowly. There's a lot of leaves. We do contact Groot weekly, if not several times a week. They were out this past weekend. They had five trucks working this weekend. They generally will have four trucks. That can vary if they have a mechanical failure or if someone is sick, but they are out working. They can augment those when they are completed in another community. So at this weekend, Dick thought there might be as many as seven trucks on Saturday. I don't think there were because they didn't get through what they had hoped to get through in Lacklomond and, or in Holcomb and Fairhaven, but I think they finished that up today. They'll be in Lack, then they'll be in Lacklomond. It's taking over two weeks to get through the town, as it's not uncommon when you have the, in the height of the season like it is right now. Theoretically, they should get through Lacklomond this week. They'll work again this Saturday, and then they'll have one more pass through town. It should take a week to go through and get the rest of what's out there. They will, I'm sure, work until December 6th, which is the final scheduled day for the collection program. They were hampered somewhat because of all the rain. They couldn't deliver, they couldn't take the leaves and spread them directly on the farm fields that are closest to Mundaline, because they were too soggy, so they had to drive farther away to Wakanda in order to get, take them to the landscape facility. That slowed their turnaround time, their cycle time, a bit, but they're working through all that, and I watched them go, it is really slow, because the piles are so big, and they are compacted. And we have gotten a lot of calls, but, you know, we do put it in the newsletter, and we do have it on the website, to please be patient, they'll get through town. Every year that I've been here for 25 years, they've gotten all the leaves collected, with maybe one occasion when it, we had a huge snow just before the end of the season, but, so that can happen, but even in that case, they returned when the, when it's thawed out and they did collect them, so.
So, I'm sorry, just so that I, I think maybe I perhaps didn't understand this. So if you live somewhere other than Lacklomond, right now, and you have leaves out, they're not going to be collected until next week at the earliest?
More than likely, that's right.
Huh.
It takes a long time to get, it take, like I said, it takes over, over two weeks for them to get through town. Once they do, once they complete this cycle, though, they should be able to do town in a week. And that'd be the last week, the week of whatever that is.
Ending December 6th is the next week.
Yep.
Huh, okay, well, maybe if you want to pass on to Groot, I, I'm sure I'm not the only one, and I've gotten three complaints in the last weekend alone.
Well, we had a lot of calls last week from Cambridge West and Fairhaven, so we were in contact with Dick a lot last week. They did take a little bit longer to get through those neighborhoods than we anticipated, but it was an extra day. The people that called me back or emailed me, once they got their leaves picked up, they were satisfied, and they thanked us for their leaves getting picked up. And now, if you look at those areas, it won't take, there are still, like the mayor said, there are people who waited till the, after the trucks came through and are just now raking, but they should get through those areas quickly. It was, it's a strange year. If you look, there's still, you'll still see trees fully leafed out. Now, those leaves may not get, I don't know, they'll get collected because they don't want to let go, so, there is a limit, but in general, they will, they're out working, they have at least five trucks working, and they'll continue to work until, at least till December 6th. We'll call them and make sure that they, you know, we know where they're working. When people call, we can give them an update on where they're at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, other reports? No? Thanks a lot, Mr. Flynn. Schedule business, omnibus vote items. We have exhibits, let me get this right, A through G. Does any trustee wish to remove any item, item A through G, from the omnibus vote item list? No? Okay, then I need a motion to pass omnibus vote items A through G.
No move?
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Voss, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to village staff reports, village administrator, Mr. Labado.
I have no report, but I have one announcement, and I'm sure, I think it's worth noting that one of us amongst us is celebrating 25 years with the Village Mundaline. Mr. Flynn will be, I think his words were, "I don't want you to do anything," so, at least, that's the message that came back to me, but I think it's worth recognizing, Mr. Flynn, somebody that's been in public service for 25 years is quite an accomplishment, and I think that, over those years, he's been a great asset to Mundaline, and I think he's represented the community in an extremely professional manner, and so I just wanted the board to know and to publicly acknowledge Mike for his 25 years of service with the Village Mundaline.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Lord. Thank you.
I've enjoyed every minute of it.
Wow.
Your boss is what makes it so.
Oh, yeah.
I've had, I have no other report.
Okay. Village attorney, Mr. Marino?
I have no report. I don't believe there's any.
Village clerk?
No report.
Okay. Any other business? No? Okay, that takes us to adjourn, and I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Abernathy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you very much.